Councilmember Chip Vincent from Community and Economic Development. And two things we wanted to cover this evening. First is, we wanted to give you a look at the work that's been going on behind the scenes with respect to the Community Needs Assessment. We've been talking about this for a long time, and this is really our first opportunity to brief the council in terms of the work that's gone on to and some of the outcomes and findings of the Community Needs Assessment. First, I want to share with you that the Community Needs Assessment really forms the basis for our Housing and Human Services element of our comprehensive plan that we're going to update this year. Secondly, it provides the foundation as well for the citywide Human Services Plan for the city that will begin in 2015. And finally, it is an essential element of the Sunset Community Investment Strategy. We're applying for HUD grant for that, and this is an essential part of providing a lot of the documentation and information that's important and a component of the HUD grant, the implementation grant that we're seeking this year as well. So it really provides the backbone of those three documents that we will be advancing in the city. We feel very lucky that we had not just a great consultant in Birken Associates, and Dawn Couch who's here is going to present it to you as well, but our staff who've worked on this, two of whom are here today, both Mark Santos Johnson and Karen Burgsvik, who were instrumental in really providing the oversight and guidance, both from CED and Community Services as part of this joint effort. And I would like to thank Terry as well, as part of that collaboration between CED and Community Services. So with that as an introduction, let me introduce Dawn Couch.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. We submitted our draft products about in the end of January. And so what I'm going to do today is just share a little bit about the process and what we found is to be the priority, housing and human service needs in Renton, and talk a little bit about, from there, what the next steps of the city are, which Chip mostly just said, so it'll be a repeat of that somewhat. So to get started, the RFP came out, and we really looked closely at the purpose. So the purpose of this is really kind of the analytic basis of a lot of the projects and efforts that Chip just described, that the city is undergoing over the next few months and year even. Really, the needs assessment is a gap analysis. It's looking at what the current community condition is and what the desired condition is, and trying to, as best we can, develop some sort of measurable difference between what is and what should be. We used both quantitative and qualitative information to get to the priority needs that I'll discuss in a moment, and I'll go through a little bit more of the process and approach we took to get there. From the very beginning, when we came and interviewed for the project, we really stressed that we wanted to do something that was really focused on utilization. We wanted to do a needs assessment that was designed to serve the city's needs, given the planning projects that we knew they had underway. And we were also familiar with some of the regional efforts to collaborate on some issues, homelessness being an example, education in South Falcon County area. So we really wanted to design a process and approach and a suite of projects, products, excuse me, that met the different needs that the city intended for this. So we really focused at the beginning is, what is the intended use? And we designed everything around that intended use. Am I advancing? Oh, you got the touch. Chip has the touch on the mouse. Okay, good. So I'm going to speak a little bit just about the approach and methods. We put a lot of thought into this and had great collaboration and guidance from the city. So the approach really had two sides of it. One was the quantitative approach, and that's where we pulled through all the federal, state, county, and city sources. And we brought the information that we could to bear on the question of what are the current community conditions in Renton. A lot of this information you may be familiar with. We also dug down on areas that we knew were a priority issue or of interest to the city. So we tried to target our efforts in the quantitative assessment to the types of information most important to decision-making at this moment. There's also a charge to us that, you know, the consultants are here to do the analysis, and then the consultants leave, and the city wants to be able to build on the work that we did and continue to use it over the long term. So we focused on data that was reproducible. We were very clear about where the data came from and developed some tools and systems so it can be updated over time. We don't expect every data point to be updated over time, but there are some areas of, we knew was going to be an area of policy development and focus, and so we really wanted that be prepared for the city so they can update it. We wanted to do data that, where we could use some comparisons within Renton and between Renton and other jurisdictions to give some interpretive ability around the data points. And then we also wanted to make sure that we met the requirements of the Growth Management Act and the countywide planning policies. So an example of that last point would be, countywide planning policies ask people to, or ask jurisdictions to assess their housing need according to ratios of area median income. So we used that definition from the start so that the analysis we produced was directly relevant to the planning policy questions that the city has to consider as part of its comprehensive plan update. So I have on the chart here just some quantitative, like, example data charts. I didn't want to bore you with all 54 pages of that. And then a list of the data sources. Later, if there's questions about what we looked at, we can come back to the slide and talk about it in more detail. The other side of the approach, which is near to my heart, is the qualitative methods. And so the qualitative methods to a project like this are really critical because it does two things. One, it improves the quality of information, the quality of product that you can come. It makes the findings locally relevant and allows you to put it into the language of your local stakeholders that will be doing the work of meeting community needs from here and forward. The other thing it does is it starts building that common conversation of what are the needs? And it starts, just by asking that question, motivating, reconfirming commitment to meet those needs and motivating collaboration around addressing those needs. So we worked really closely with the city staff team to figure out who are the connectors that we want to connect with, who are the people we need to interview, what, you know, focus group opportunities, what existing bodies can we go to their meeting and have this conversation with them? So we focused on both users or beneficiaries of housing supports and human services, as well as the partners and stakeholders that are in the business of providing those services to community members. The picture across here at the bottom is the Golden Pines. It's a Renton Housing Authority, community of senior citizens, and they meet weekly for sort of a volunteer, there's a volunteer that comes in and does an English-language learner kind of group conversation. And there was a week for which the volunteer structure was not available, so I went in her place, and we spent the first hour and a half talking about their experience of living in Renton and what they do to meet, have their socialization needs, as well as nutrition needs and other needs met. And it happened to be, this focus group happened to be around the time of Halloween, so I also spent some time explaining some of our local customs related to Halloween and the phrasings they would hear in the community. So it's a mixture of older Asian, older European-Americans that reside at Golden Pines. So this slide right here, basically just, what are the priority needs? That's the big question. And this is just an overview of the five major categories and the 13 priority needs we identified. I'm going to go through and talk about each one individually. I just wanted to give you kind of an overview presentation of it. And I wanted to take an opportunity just to remind you that we took the term "need" to mean that gap between what the current community condition is and what a desired or, you know, we get a direction of what the current community condition should be. So we did do quite a bit of analysis of, for example, the demographic makeup, the race, ethnic, linguistic minority populations. A lot of those don't, aren't really, appear in the needs because we can say, well, 30% of the Renton population does not speak English, it's the first language. That might inform how some services are provided, but it doesn't necessarily, other than ESL, perhaps, give a lot of definition of community need. We're sort of agnostic if that percentage goes up or down, it just tells us about the community we're trying to serve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I did, and apologize for arriving just a tad later. I didn't get your name?
My name's Dawn.
Dawn, okay.
Dawn Couch.
Dawn Couch, okay. Did I hear you say that part of the needs analysis did not include what you just referred to?
It did. So the first step of the needs analysis was a community conditions report. And that includes quite a bit of information on the demographic characteristics of the population. So there we have a lot of information about racial and ethnic makeup, family composition. It's sort of kind of the first chapter of that report. And what I'm pointing out here is that oftentimes when we talk about needs in Renton, we'll see a real, a lot of stress put on the diversity, the linguistic, kind of the polyglot nature of the community. So the needs here are really focused on human services and housing needs. So some of that demographic information is part of a supporting appendix that's used to inform where services may be targeted.
Okay, what would be another way of saying that that makes it a little bit more clear? With that, are you saying that this does not capture some of that information regarding the ethnic, racial demographics?
It does capture the information. It does not define need as according to an ethnic or racial group.
Okay, so it does not illustrate disparity?
It does illustrate disparity. So for example, would be, the need may be access to employment, or access to skills training for more employment options. In that case, disproportionality of unemployment would be something examined across racial groups. But then the need is stated as access to skills-building classes or something of that sort.
And what was the reason for this type of methodology?
So in terms of defining needs, a lot of the base demographic profile of the community, so for example, the analysis would show, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that technical appendices in front of me, but it would give a certain proportion of the population, for example, that's foreign-born. So that is a demographic variable of the community. And so it's something to know as you design these other services around housing and human services, that that's a quality of the community. That demographic profile is there, but we didn't, we didn't define the need specifically according to those groups. So if I may, we can go through and talk about the individual parties who identified, and in cases where there may be a difference among a racial or ethnic group that we were able to identify, I could speak to that and perhaps illustrate how that information was used.
But if I'm understanding what you're saying to me, then in large part, some of this information doesn't capture specific disparity in terms of disproportionality among ethnic groups?
Any, any position where, through the community conversations we had, someone identified or suggested there would be a disproportionality, we did our best to quantify that. So, but not, and, so for example, education outcomes. We looked at the difference between white, the high school graduation rate of students who are characterized as white versus students who are characterized as any category, racial category, other than white. So we looked at that as a disproportionality, but the need is stated more as access to quality education for everybody. Does that, does that help clarify on that example?
I may have other questions to go on.
Yeah, well, please, please. And then as we, and it kind of varies by category depending on where that disproportionality was meaningful in the analysis. So feel free to interrupt and ask that as we go forward. All right, so I'm going to start with just going through each of the categories and the needs we identified, and I appreciate all the questions and opportunity to clarify in the conversation. So the first overarching category is economic opportunity. And the top priority need we listed there, we found, was support for adults who face barriers to employment. So through the analysis, we found that, looking at the unemployment rate, other factors, labor force participation, that kind of thing, is Renton is predominantly a community of working families. And a lot of, a lot of, there aren't significant issues related to unemployment. There appears to be a lot of employment opportunity available in the community, but there are a lot of folks who work but still don't make enough to meet their basic needs or the basic needs of their family. And so this chart here, household income segmentation, basically demonstrates that there are a good portion of households in the community that have household incomes that would make it difficult to meet all the basic needs of the household. And so talking to providers or people who work with families who are facing economic hardship, one of the themes throughout those conversations was, there are the jobs here, and we have a working, willing labor force, but there's work that needs to be done to bring those two things together. And so the way we phrased it here is, support for adults who face barriers to employment. Barriers could be language, skills, transportation, different types of things that are preventing the linking up between the workforce that's here and the job opportunities that are here.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have, this is being recorded. We've got people at home taking a look at this, so I'm always looking for opportunities to try to clarify in simplistic terms so people can understand and track along with us. So as we're looking at this graph right here, the household income segmentation for 11 and 12, we got to three different bars for, one is for King County, the teal one, the light lime green is Renton, and then the yellow one is the Sunset area. And what this is saying is that the 8% of adults face barriers to employment in King County compared to 4% in Renton, compared to 2% in the Sunset area. Is that what that's saying?
Not, not quite, if I may clarify.
Okay, thank you.
This, this chart presents the how, the income segmentation, or segmentation by household income. So referring to that top group of bars.
Right, it's a $200,000.
Yeah, so 8% of the households in King County earn more than $200,000 a year.
Compared to 4% in Renton and 2% in Sunset area.
Correct.
Okay. So if we go down all of these, we could see that the, in the Sunset area, there is greater disparity in the Sunset area as compared to the rest of Renton and all of King County?
Yes, yes. I would say that there's greater, more households in the Sunset area are represented in the lower, lower income brackets. I think one thing that's really important to note here too, is that actually, for the three, the three areas that we're looking at, King County and Renton and Sunset area, there's representation across all the income brackets. So whereas the Sunset area is known, is an area that does have a greater proportion of very low-income households, there's actually kind of a range of incomes represented in the, in the community there. So the next priority need that we identified related to economic opportunity is access to living wage jobs and career advancement. So this speaks again to the portions of the population that are working, but perhaps aren't able to get enough hours or find themselves facing challenges of moving up within opportunities to have career advancement where they are working. So this is, speaks to the need in the community of households who are trying to increase their earning potential.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Dawn, could you just talk a little bit about these? Because I, I don't want us to have the assumption that people at home can really track and understand. This is a report that was put together to help us to understand, you know, the needs of our community, so I like to use every opportunity to try to communicate that in layman's terms to people that are watching at home as well.
Absolutely. The, so the process that we used to identify the community needs was, we created just a baseline community conditions report where we pulled forward all the data, secondary data, all the data that cities publish, that counties publish, that the state publishes, that we could, to understand basically the base conditions in Renton. So that includes demographic characteristics of the community, market characteristics of the housing stock, quality of the housing stock. I think Karen's pulling forward some exhibits here. So, so we started with just kind of a, you know, market and demographic profile of the community. So we, we got all the qualitative data, quantitative data, and we put it in charts. Then we brought that to the community in different forms. We did work sessions with community representatives. We took some smaller samples of the information to the boards and commissions that meet. We had kind of structured conversations. For example, like, we see this as a need in the community, can you explain more to this about, explain more about this to us with different representatives of the community? So we took the numbers and data that we had, plus all these conversations, and we brought it together, and we wanted to understand across all these conversations and the data where we're looking at, what were the needs, both on the housing and human services sides, that were coming to the top as most frequently mentioned, most substantiated by the secondary data? And then where we heard more different types of examples of different groups of people experiencing this need. The top community needs here are the most, kind of what people felt were the priority community needs in both, related to both housing and human services. These are needs that are felt by broader sections of the population. Some needs that are experienced by smaller groups of people that are perhaps more dire didn't flow as top priority, community priority needs.
Okay, and I'm, I'm actually wanting you to address the graph in terms of, I mean, people at home are being able to see that, so if you could make that more understandable for them as well.
Yes, so this is one, this is one of the pieces of analysis we use to understand economic opportunity in the community. And this relates to the household income of households all across Renton, King County, and the Sunset area. So every household in the United States reports an estimate of their annual income to the U.S. Census Bureau, it's part of the federal census. And so we use that information and grouped it into the categories that are listed on the, on the page here. So what this graph tells us is, households earning very, $15,000 or less estimated within a year, that 22% of Sunset area households are represented in that income category. 10% of all Renton households and 9% of King County households earn under $15,000 in a year. You can see, just by looking at the relationships between King County, Renton, and the Sunset area, King County is slightly more highly, slightly more represented in the higher income categories. Sunset area is slightly more represented in the lower income areas proportionally, and Renton kind of falls between the two.
So one observation is that we know that, you know, 35, incomes of $35,000 and below is below the poverty rate. And if we look at the 25 to 34, $35,000 category, 34, 9, we'd get 11% there in the Sunset, another 11% from the 15 to 24, and then another 22%. So respectively, we've got about 44% of the Sunset area residents below the poverty.
I think that's close, but not quite, because poverty is determined by the number of persons in the household. So in areas where you have single-family households, the income threshold that would have that person designated as poverty.
Would be a little less, but nonetheless, that's low income for that group.
Right, right. And then a very large household would have a slightly higher threshold.
That's a significant number too.
Excuse me?
Go, continue.
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Please.
Okay, move on. So the second category, the second group of needs was around basic needs for families, just like on the chart that Councilmember Taylor was speaking to earlier. A lot of it's driven by just limited resources that families have. The first priority community was improved access to nutrition support. So in the conversations we had with providers and just community members who are beneficiaries of human services, people said great things, highly respected nutrition support services in the community, but they spoke to the challenge of access to those services, some of it being transportation. For example, the food bank is open and available, but it's difficult for people, older people or people with mobility issues to get to the food bank, to collect the food, and bring it back to their, their home. There's also social and cultural barriers about ethnic foods or, or language barriers that they felt made them hesitant to ask for, for nutrition support. So just the focus here is on improving the access to nutrition support in the community. The second basic need for families that, that came up, that were mentioned by a lot of people and identified as a priority need, was service-rich day-and-night shelters for homeless families. We heard a lot from service providers about the needs for homeless families, and there are more, and some comments that there's been great effort around services for single adults, but it's very difficult to keep families together if they should lose their, their, their home.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dawn, if you could just go back, did I hear you make a statement that said that there were some responders to this survey that, or you accessed information that indicated that there are some families that were reluctant to seek help?
So related to improve, related to nutrition support. So there are nutrition services available in the community, but, so this, I heard mostly from providers, that providers had people who were eligible to receive food from those services, but didn't take advantage of it, like, didn't avail themselves to those services. And then, and just, and I was like, so why? Why would they not use those services? And food particularly is such a culturally and ethnically specific part of someone's life. They felt that they wouldn't like the food. Like, why get food if I'm not going to like it? Why get food if I'm not going to know how to prepare it? Or for cases where there were kind of meals provided, there were either social or language obstacles where they felt that they, they wouldn't avail themselves to the service. So the service, in some cases, services existed in the community but potentially could be serving a greater portion of the needs if we were able to address some of the social, the felt social barriers that people had that was preventing them from using those services.
Any indication of how these service providers captured that information?
In terms of their own sort of program improvement? I heard some to the challenges of it, but I can't speak to, I didn't ask that question, nor can I speak to service providers' efforts to improve services on this issue.
And specifically, I'm wanting to know, how did they learn that information? That there are groups of people out there that qualify for their services but were unwilling to seek them out because of the cultural incompatibilities of the diet or other reasons?
The participants, or the people I spoke with personally, the people that participated in the workshops, they were, they were, they were very motivated to serve as much of the community as they could, and they recognized these barriers. And I think by bringing the question up and trying to start that conversation, they would often ask me for feedback or suggestions of how they could approve the services, or if I learned of another avenue, opportunity connector that could help them reach communities or reduce some of these barriers. And so there's an interest on the part of the service providers to remedy or to get past some of these barriers that were identified. And they're, and they would, you know, so in the conversation, they would identify as a barrier, and we would maybe kind of brainstorm a little bit about what really was the obstacle, trying to get more specific about that. But I don't have, that's where my part, my process left off. And so as the community works together, as this conversation's now more clearly on the table, and people have kind of tried to understand a little bit the balance of that question, I think there's collaboration and partnering and work to do to remedy some of these felt social barriers to some of the existing services. All right, I'm going to keep going on, and if you want me to slow down, please just go ahead and tell me.
We need, we need you to keep scrolling along because we're going to run out of time.
Okay.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We waited some time for this report, and I, I really would not like to get the impression that we're going to run through this without being able to have our questions answered significantly. And so I understand the time for the other items on the agenda, but I've looked forward to this report for some time, and if I have questions, I'm going to ask my questions.
Well, Mr. Taylor, I've let you ask your questions.
And I may have more.
And I didn't say you couldn't ask.
Okay, well, I don't want to get the impression that we're going to just blow through this as if this is not significant. This is very significant for our community, and I plan to learn as much as I can about it.
Well, I think we all want the same thing.
Thank you.
I'll do my best to speak clearly and succinctly. So, so the next category is health and wellness. The thing that we heard was better access to health and dental care for low-income residents. And so you'll note here again the use of the term "access." There are really great quality services, dental services and medical services provided. There's some great community assets. Valley Medical's having something happening in the parking lot right now with their van. So there's great resources here, but what I heard from community members and providers of services is this just challenges of access. You, I might anticipate on some of this is financial barriers for things like dental care, but they also spoke to some of the more non-financial barriers, such as location of services, hours of service related to working times, and just mobility issues and transportation to get to some of the services that are available. The next, in health and wellness, was The next, in health and wellness, was of a need was early childhood screenings and parenting support. So working with providers that work with families, for example, the community and school liaisons, there is a gap, kind of just a gap in the way it works out now, is that there are prenatal services and delivery assistance for families who might not otherwise have access to that. And then there's not a service available until the child enters the school district and actually gets flagged. So what happens is there are opportunities for early interventions on some developmental delays or speech delays that aren't being addressed until the child reaches school age. And if there was a way to have a screening opportunity earlier, then the child would be eligible for intervention services at an earlier age and perhaps be able to remedy or to make the gains it needs to make, so it doesn't have to be remediated once it gets to the school age.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Don, can you go back and pop that slide up again, please? That's critical information to know. That last slide that revealed the statistics for the information you just gave us.
So the exhibit that's on the page here is just five-year percent of adults with inadequate access to care indicators. So this is the information that Seattle, King County Public Health puts together, and then the categories they have. We know some of these indicators are correlated with not having a personal doctor or a medical home, is the term that's used. And then talking with the service providers in the community as a priority need for children's health particularly, this gap in screening and early childhood parenting support between ages of zero and five was frequently mentioned.
Do we have a percentage of what that number was?
We don't, I don't, I don't have the, I have the percentage, I don't have the percentage of children who are not receiving early screenings. And that information isn't published. I do, on the chart here, does not have a personal doctor, but that would be for adults. So, I'm sorry, this is the point I was just speaking to. And then the last point, top priority human service need is mental health and substance abuse services. So we heard this very vividly from a lot of partners in the community, stakeholders, and we dug and dug and dug and tried to understand, you know, nationally, how people quantify the number of community members who may have a mental or substance abuse need that who aren't able to access services. And that information's very difficult in the, because the way mental health is experienced, people don't self-report as having mental health issues. And so it's very difficult to identify this precise gap. But I can tell you from the conversations I had with members of the community and the work I've done with the staff and community stakeholders, that there is a felt need here for mental health and substance abuse services, and there are challenges with providing services to those populations. So the next section is on attainable and quality housing. And so we use attainable rather than just affordable to address some of the other barriers to access to quality housing other than financial. So the first need across all of the housing conversations, all houses we had, was more rental units attainable to those earning thirty percent of King County median income or below. We saw in our earlier slide what the income level of thirty percent of, I'm sorry, no, we saw on our earlier slide, the income segmentation of the, of Renton and Sunset area. Our analysis based on that King County area median income shows that twenty-one thousand dollars would be the high income range for a year, so twenty-one thousand dollars annually would be the high income range. And using just basic standard assumptions, that would give you five hundred and twenty-five dollars a month to put towards housing costs. So the number of rental units affordable is none in the private market without any subsidies. Renton does have, has housing stock that has different types of subsidies, so there are many families able to, with low incomes, able to live in Renton and not be over housing burdened. But there's still quite a gap there in terms of the housing stock needed. The second one was more safe, energy-efficient, and healthy housing attainable to low and moderate income households. And so conversations with this one really focused on, you know, Renton is known, Renton isn't necessarily known, but Renton does have affordable housing stock. In some communities, that's not the case. And so people were appreciative that that is a community benefit that you have here. There is some housing that is affordable to lower incomes. A lot of the other housing challenges we heard about were things like utility costs, which was related to the insulation properties of the structures, mold, or health concerns related to water intrusion. So there were some quality issues associated with some of the housing stock. So in talking, conversations with people, like, financial ability is one dimension, but there's also these other needs around safe, energy-efficient, and healthy housing as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Don, did we get any indication of the thoughts about whether or not there were sufficient attainable housing?
So there's not sufficient, it depends, there's not sufficient attainable housing. And it varies by income group segmentation about what the size of that gap, I should say. Some gaps are bigger than other gaps. And the reason it's worded as, the need is worded here as more safe, energy-efficient, and healthy housing attainable to low and moderate income households is because the service providers, the whole purpose of having affordable housing is so that you can have a stable home in which to have your family and live your life. And so some units may be affordable, but have these other quality issues that doesn't meet that need of having a stable housing, a suitable shelter, so that you can live your life. And so we added these other qualities to the need and didn't define it strictly as affordable.
Okay, but do we have some clear indication what the gap of unattainable housing looks like in our city?
We have the.
Or those higher.
Yeah, we have more information about the financial attainability in the housing assessment. And we have less, I think, specific information on some of the quality indicators, just because they're not available in a systematic way. And then the final, I'll get the hang of this mouse towards the end of my presentation. So the final attainable quality housing priority need was increased housing security and reduced loss of housing. So in the conversations here, again, going back to that question, the issue of homeless families, is once a family loses their shelter and becomes homeless, it is much more traumatic and difficult, expensive to get them back into stable housing. So from people who work in the community with families who find themselves in very difficult financial situations, the priority there is about keeping them in housing so that they don't become homeless. And so strategies to increase housing security and reduce loss of housing were the need. This also relates to the ability to serve other needs. For example, education opportunity can be somewhat eroded when children have to move from house to house to house because they have unstable housing. And the final category was neighborhood opportunity. This speaks a little bit more at the neighborhood and community level variables. So the first was improve mobility and transportation options. And so in some parts of the, so what we're looking at here is one of the exhibits we had in our report. This is from PSRC's Opportunity Mapping Project, where they created an index of mobility and transportation, and they looked at all tracks within King County. So in this chart, the areas that are the darker purple are areas that are considered to be higher opportunity. And I'll just, it's not on the chart here, but I will speak a little bit to, the parts of that index include the transportation cost, access to transit, or the percentage of the total area within one-quarter mile of an express bus stop, and the walkability, which they, they use the proxy of the number of commuters that walk to work as the walkability of the area. So they took those four variables together to create the Mobility Transportation Index. And what we've mapped here is just the census tracks that are either totally within Renton's boundaries or overlap with Renton's boundaries. And the point I want to make to this is, is that Renton, depending on where you are in Renton, the mobility transportation options can be really good or not so good. And so it's just an uneven amount of access across the entire city. So the need, the way it was articulated, was improve mobility and transportation options.
Mr. Chair. So, Don, I'm seeing a pattern here. Okay, we're identifying that there are some significant gaps in the Sunset area in income, employment, housing, attainability, and now transportation, mobility.
Transportation, mobility, opportunity.
Right.
Mm-hmm. The second was more high-quality out-of-school-time opportunities for youth. So, you know, I think, so the real focus on out-of-school-time opportunities for youth was something that would be productive for youth to do, for the youth themselves. And so in conversations with, with providers, a lot of the, you know, the youth where there are programs available at very low cost, the youth may not participate because they're looking for a job. They really want to get a job, and so they're looking for an after-school job. But then they never get the after-school job, and they've kind of not had the benefit of the other, any sort of enrichment opportunities, recreational opportunities, nor a job. And so there's sort of a challenge here, we're not quite meeting the needs of the youth, and so the youth are not being able to take advantage of any quality out-of-school time. So they have more idle time, and, yeah, I guess that's all to say about that. So people are looking for opportunities for youth that the youth themselves would like. And the final one is increased access to affordable, quality, early childhood education. We did some research to sort of get a sense of, we have this number of three- and four-year-olds in the community, there's this many licensed daycare providers, but we know that a lot of children, it's very hard to find where the actual care opportunities are. So some of it's just a lack of good information about where to find quality childhood education, and some of it is that there are areas where there just isn't, there aren't real options for early childhood education that are attainable to the families that need it. So those were the five major categories and the thirteen priority needs. And so the next slide, we heard, the conversations we had really ranged. So a lot of it was what are the needs? And then we heard things, what can we do to improve the services, improve our capacity to provide services, and improve the effectiveness with which we provide services? So when you get all these stakeholders in a room together, that's where they go. They want to know, how can we better provide and meet the needs for Renton? And some of the, the two other kind of cross-cutting themes we heard a lot in the conversations was one about equity. And this is a really commonly-used graphic describing equity. So equality where everybody gets the same thing versus equity where everybody gets what they need according to their needs. And so there's this emphasis, this value placed on equity in terms of addressing human service and housing need. And the other stories we heard in the conversations we had was just, you know, always endeavoring to provide services and maintaining the dignity of the community members that you need the services so that they can make ends meet. So I'm going to move on to the next steps and turn it over. And this really speaks a lot to what Chip said at the beginning, just reminding us all that this is not the end of the conversation. This is really the starting of a conversation. And I'm really excited about the process that we were able to accomplish, because I thought we brought a lot of people together around these issues in a way that hadn't been done so formally before. So as a start of the conversation, and we've had now some priority topic areas to flesh out further, there's more work to be done, and I've listed some of the items here that I know that the city is currently pursuing. So one I'm sure you're familiar with is the Comprehensive Plan Update. And including that is the Housing and Human Services element. So that's where the city will look at the policies and regulation and advance those towards the needs that were identified, to address the needs that are identified. Update, the second one was updating strategies for addressing human service needs. There's the senior service business planning that's happening right now, and then a human services strategic plan that would be starting, I believe, in the fall. And that's really where understanding the role of the city, how to be an effective partner, advancing the relationships with the providers in the community, and then looking at how community development block group funds can be leveraged to close the gap on some of the needs that have been demonstrated. And then finally, as Chip mentioned earlier, just grant applications, you know, looking for resources to bring into the community to support the Sunset community redevelopment. I put grant applications and PLO there because I know the HUD, HUD grant is one of them, but there may be local and regional opportunities for that as well.
Excuse me, any other questions?
Yes, Don, I am going to have some more questions. Is it possible I can get your contact information?
Of course, of course. I'd be happy to.
I just got my hands on it, so I want to get into it a little bit more, and I'm sure I'm going to have some more questions.
I'd be happy to, to talk with you and to go through more of the details of the assessment we did.
Great, thank you.
As we load up the next presentation that I'll do briefly, I just wanted to underscore one of the points that Councilmember Taylor raised about the, he was seeing a pattern in the information that was coming forward. That pattern is really important for us in terms of being able to advance our Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant with the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. We see that pattern, too, and we think it's a compelling story in terms of making us very competitive, in terms of seeking federal monies through HUD to be able to address these issues that were identified as part of this work that we've done here, as well as continue to provide good information so we can make informed choices on policies and strategies as part of the work that we do in community services and community and economic development. And with that, because it is kind of a segue issue, everybody, I think all the council members are familiar with the proposal that Howard McCumber has advanced with the City Council, that basically identifies three different requests as part of advancing affordable housing opportunities for owner-occupied housing in the Sunset area specifically. Because it is related to the conversation we just had, we thought that this would be a good time to start this conversation with the council as well. This is the beginning of the conversation and begins to frame it just from CED and the administration's point of view.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Chip, I saw the email that indicated today earlier that Howard had a family emergency and was unable to be here, and that he had really wanted to be here to speak on behalf of this, this issue that he's concerned about. And I appreciate that we're going to, you know, it's been on the agenda, we're going to move forward with it. But I would hope that we invite Mr. McCumber to come back again, you know, and to iterate more that may get missed today because he was the presenter of this information.
Mr. Taylor, unfortunately, you're a little late. And so you didn't get, we didn't get a chance to have any conversation. We're well aware that Mr. McCumber's out of town. I did talk to him, and there's no intention to take any action tonight. And I think it's August 4th, we'll have, we have him already scheduled to come and make, finish his presentation that he was cut off before, so.
Great.
This is just information for the council to consider until we get a chance to hear from him again.
Good, good. I'm glad we made that decision. I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah. And I'm not planning, I will also share that this PowerPoint presentation, I've had a chance to sit down and meet with Howard and his partners and share this information with him, so that, you know, he's aware where we're coming from, from the administration side as well, as part of this ongoing discussion on this. The proposal basically is three points. Number one is looking at waive fees that run the gamut from waiving building permit fees to system development charges, as well as the menu of impact fees we have in the city. The second component is waiving open space requirements, and then finally, a request to waive development standards for our streets. In exchange for waiving these provisions, the proposal is to provide for owner-occupied housing for people earning eighty percent or less of area average median income for a period of ten years. In terms of context, this was reviewed at the end of the last year by the Planning and Development Committee, and this specifically is the language that came out of the Planning and Development Committee, that basically says that the Planning and Development Committee finds that the proposal that's being advanced should be considered as part of the update to the Housing and Human Services element of the Comprehensive Plan. This may be an effective tool, but it may be a solution where we haven't defined the problem yet. And while the community needs assessment begins to define the problem, we haven't yet developed that Housing and Human Services element and had a public dialogue, and that really. And that really needs to, from the administration's point of view, that was shared by the Planning and Development Committee, that needs to be part of that public discussion. Even, and this basically says that the administration concurs with that point of view, that this should be part of that update to the housing and human services element. But we also wanted to put on the table that even absent the update to the housing and human services element, there's three issues that really cause some concern for the proposal that Mr. McCumber has advanced with his partners. Number one is just the duration of the housing being affordable, only being for a 10-year period of time. That's a lot of waived fees and requirements in order to secure affordable housing for a 10-year period of time. Typically, if we were working with a nonprofit owner-occupied housing provider, typically that length is between 30 and 50 years. So significantly different period of time in terms of duration, in terms of the incentives that are being asked for. The second component relates to the units themselves, the structures that are being retained. We, as administration, are reluctant to advance incentives that retain the existing duplexes that are almost 70 years old now. And as we have seen now from the demolition of the Phase 1 of the Sunset project, frankly, in really poor condition. And to Dawn's point, we were discussing about the quality of the housing. It's difficult for us to advance any initiative that incentivizes retaining the existing duplexes that are already there. While they may be affordable, they really lack the basic quality that we're looking for in terms of affordable housing. And then finally, with respect to the streetscape standards, the streetscape is an integral part of the Sunset area vision, and that's a shared vision both for the public sector as well as the private sector. So we're very reluctant to advance any proposal that waives the frontage improvements for the right-of-way in the kind of pedestrian environment that we're trying to create, as well as the greenscape as part of the redevelopment of that community. So did want to share with you that those are the three main concerns from the administration's point of view that we had, you know, absent having that housing and human services draft element in front of us. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you very much. And now we'll go on to emerging issues.
Regional issues.
That you, or is it Terry? Regional issues and updates.
This is actually for the council, just to report out on your regional boards and activities you've been doing to, I think, pace that, as we know, if there are circumstances where there, the regional body is looking for opinion from the city, then this is the opportunity to kind of talk about that so you can go back as representative of the city. So I, we try to schedule this, as you know, fairly routinely. We've been remiss the last couple of months just because of other pressing items. So this is really your opportunity to kind of talk about your various activities on regional boards and commissions that you've been appointed to.
Who wants to start?
Start.
What, Terry?
I'm on the State Pipeline Safety Commission, and we're actually having our next meeting on Thursday. But it's been interesting most recently because there's been several accidents, and the more I read into pipeline safety, I'm more aware of the potential now for truck and train problems with the hundreds of millions of gallons of gasoline that are coming out of the Bakken mines in North Dakota. They are being shipped by train, which we don't have a lot of regulations in the state of Washington regarding that. And also truck. And I realize that doesn't fit necessarily in the pipeline safety, but it certainly makes me think that we're going to have more issues along that line in the near future rather than, you know, because they're not going to have the time or the money to be rebuilding pipelines quickly when they can put them on a train. So I know I met with the fire department several months ago with some concerns they had about ethanol, which is being, in the city of Renton, we have a Phillips 66 area where they store ethanol. And the way it works is a gas, a truck that's going to fill up a gas station goes and adds the correct amount of ethanol to their gasoline based on what the station wants. And it needs different kinds of protection from hazards. So the fire protection that they would use on regular fuel is not effective on ethanol. So I know they're in the process of trying to store, trying to get some more chemicals so that the fire department can be attentive to that. But it's also interesting to me that the actual Phillips 66 site does not have sufficient foam to kill any accidents that they might have there. So anyway, there's just a lot of new things going on, I think, with the changes that are going on in energy. So fascinating subject.
Well, thank you. That, you know, the one thing that as you talk about it, pipeline safety is the tank cars full of propane that are taken into the Renton treatment facility.
Oh, yeah.
Very, very, very dangerous, and there's a lot of it.
And a lot of it, actually, yeah, we haven't discussed that topic. Interesting.
So I just, that'd be something if you may want to...
Yeah, one of the other issues with the ethanol is they also only transport it by truck. It can be put in a pipeline, but the cleanup before it can run and after it can run uses up so much product and is time-consuming and expensive to do. So they, unless a pipeline is dedicated only to ethanol, which it's not in our area at all, they don't do it that way. They just send it by truck. And so here it is, it's highly flammable. We don't really have a lot of foam product to put, to put it out should it catch on fire. So, you know, it's a, it's a big accident waiting to happen essentially.
Mr. Chair. Interesting that you brought that up because Skateboard had a presentation from BNSF last month, I think it was last month, the regional director, and really was a lot of interesting information. And from that, the board voted to send a letter from Skateboard to the governor, I just was pulling that up, and asking his office to coordinate an oil train accident response plan and local hazmat training in order to address the safety of our residents and property along the railways in our region.
Well, you know, he just actually did that, I believe it was today. I read an article where he's directed investigation into the safety of the trucks. And actually, some of the numbers I was reporting, it's something like 100 million tank trucks right now when it used to be 40,000. I mean, it's, it's really dramatic, and it's, you know, they're primarily coming from North Dakota, so it's going through a lot of states. And then they're also looking at, you know, opportunities maybe to, you know, along the coast, like Grace Harbor and stuff, where it gets and where it goes from there, some, you know, building and things that they're going to have to be doing. But there's not a lot of regulations that monitor the trains or that the trains have, that tanker trains have to do, and it varies from state to state, and some states don't have much of anything. So it's going to be ongoing process.
And the other thing that was an eye-opener and a concern is that BNSF doesn't tell jurisdictions.
No, because they don't...
What's coming through when, and they have all their reasons why.
Right.
They also offer free training for our public safety.
Yeah, our public safety actually, I think it was through Williams, that was a different... Renton is like a hub of many different oil pipelines that run through the city. And so our fire crews have actually had some pretty good training. A couple of years ago or a year or so ago, they were actually sent for a week-long training. So we've been lucky. There's going to be some other, because of like the changes that they plan on doing to the 405, it's going to affect where some of our pipelines are, and so there's going to be a lot more in the near future. So hopefully, our folks should be up to date on everything. But when you look at some of the smaller communities that, that they're going through that probably don't have the expertise we have, it can be, it'll be an issue. So anyway, it's fascinating right now, lots of things happening.
Mr. Chair. So last week at PIC, we talked about metro, imagine that, and came up with seven guiding principles that we are sending to the county executive, how we feel. I'll just read them real quickly. Metro Transit must remain a regional transit system. Reforms at Metro Transit need to be fully explored, understood, and clearly communicated. Any tax increase adopted by Seattle or any other city, there are a lot of people who wanted to make sure any other city was included, to not single out Seattle. To increase transit service in the individual city rather than county-wide should be sunsetted after no more than three years in order to ensure that all cities in King County reengage on system-wide financial plan. Regional Transit Committee should define a minimal level of service standard for all communities in order to preserve connections and service throughout King County. Metro Transit must provide consistent and transparent reporting on financial and service level data. The productivity model at Metro Transit should be reviewed in order to ensure that travel between centers is evaluated fairly, and we must continue to work in partnership with cities, King County, and other coalition members towards the shared goal of a statewide transportation package to address our critical transportation infrastructure needs.
Good.
So if we had done this last week, I would have brought this to you guys to see what you thought, but I figured you all would be on board with all this stuff. It's going to be interesting to see what the county, how the county goes with, you know, all the infighting on the county council regarding transit and service levels.
And at RTC, this Wednesday, we're going to get a briefing on the planned transit reductions. We had the draft of that last month and read it out at...
They reworded it.
Yeah, we kind of wordsmithed it a little bit too, but we did let Seattle and King County Council know that that's what was coming.
Yeah, and there were some folks from Seattle in the audience, and they weren't overly happy because they want to do what they want to do, but, you know, metro is a regional, county-wide transit system, and once we start balkanizing it, it's just going to hurt all of us.
Comes to haves and have-nots because small cities can't afford...
Absolutely.
...to dump any more money than what their taxpayers are...
Yeah.
...are already doing.
Yeah. I heard that from Al, the mayor of Algonah, he was like, we couldn't, you know...
Air Hill.
Yeah, we couldn't afford to do this. That's all.
Good. Anybody else?
Well, I kind of just jumped in on both of yours with, it sounds like there's a lot of overlap and dovetailing going on, which is a good thing. Everybody's not going off on their own.
Marcy, I wonder if you want to talk a little bit about the airport. There's our, our airport.
Oh, yes.
Because yourself, as I read through the minutes, there's a lot of activity going on this summer, and you want to give us a little...
Yes, and actually, RAC, Renton Airport Advisory Committee, met last Tuesday, had an outstanding turnout. Every single neighborhood was represented with at least one, and many of them with two of our reps, so both...
Is that because you offered the barbecue and the food?
No, that was, that was a non-meeting night.
Okay.
And I thought all the players were in the room except Boeing, and that was really too bad because there is a lot going on. The North Bridge replacement continues. It's a multi-year project. Last year, we heard the pile drivings to, so they could construct the temporary bridge, which is now in, and now they're working on the permanent one. Boeing needs both accesses. They have one a little further south that most of us are familiar with, Off Perimeter Road, and then this is the backup. And they actually, because of the height and the way that the MAXes are built, that's another reason they had to reconstruct it, plus it just wasn't going to survive another earthquake. So that's going to be ongoing. There is a website, I think we have a link to it on the city website. Noise complaints should not come to our airport or the city, they should go to Boeing. And there's a really good website. They have a cam, camera you can look at online and see the progress because you really can't see what they're doing from outside the fences. When you actually get inside the airport, it's just amazing what they're doing. There will be, at the airport itself, we are starting to review and will be updating the master plan, which hasn't been done since...
2007.
When was it?
2007.
Well, no, that was just little bits and pieces. This is the whole comprehensive, master comprehensive plan for the airport. There's a consultant that will be working, and it'll be really important for RAC members to be attending and to get the information out to their neighbors. So anything to do with the airport, if any resident has a concern or a business, they should be letting their representative know, or they could let me know as the council representative.
Marcy, if I, I can just make a request. One of the difficulties I have in reading those is not knowing what building is 801 and 808.
I don't remember.
And which, you know, is Bravo, and, you know, it'd be nice to have some kind of a map that comes with those meeting minutes once in a while.
Excellent, excellent idea.
To give us an idea, because I, I do know where Building 800 is now, but I hadn't before. But especially when you're trying to determine where the, the actual work is going on, and...
Only the airport staff and tenants really know. I, I don't remember. When they rattle off these numbers, I'm like, okay...
Plus, it sounds like they're doing a lot of some renaming and shifting of some of those, so...
Yes, which apparently in aviation circles, that makes a whole lot more sense. It never did make sense the way Renton had their taxiways and...
Maybe somewhere along the line of, you know, council could be sent a, some kind of a layout.
Good idea.
Absolutely, I'll ask for that to be done.
We've, if I could, I think council president and I were talking today about a update on both the master plan, and we can, we can include some of this visual information too. I think we've tentatively looked at August 11th, I believe, for that, so...
There's one of the buildings that's being demolished. It was an old Boeing building that we've wanted to take down for 10 years because it wasn't inhabitable. It had the asbestos and every other bad thing that you could imagine, and we, it was just way too expensive. So that is pretty much down, is my understanding, and that will free up space for us to lease out, whether it's someone coming in and with a new business and building a building, or it's space that planes would be using, be it tie-downs or Boeing. And then there's a vacant building, and I don't know the number, I can tell you it's the old Whirlwind helicopter, Arrow, is vacant, and we have three applications for that space as well that Transportation Committee should be getting in the next couple of weeks.
I just have to comment that those are some of the best, the most thorough meeting minutes that I read. There's other committees, and Parks is another one, that I looked through, and I can't follow what they're doing. There's just not enough information for somebody that's not there to follow along, but the airport does a really good job.
I'll pass that on to Susan.
And so does the Park, Park Board, so that you really know what's happening, so...
Yeah, and if any council member wants a tour or field trip, airport staff is more than happy because you really can't visualize very well from the outside of the fence everything when you get inside. It's, it's really interesting.
I'll take you upon that 30,000-foot field trip.
There you go.
I'm just kidding, of course.
Oh, you want to add...
Alluding, alluding to the...
You ask, and I bet you it would happen.
Actually, there's usually a pilot around somewhere that loves to take somebody for a ride.
I did, and it was great.
It is.
Yeah.
Really interesting.
Just as you've been talking, I've gotten on our websites, our City of Renton website, and if you go to Airport and Airport Projects, you can, there's a good listing of every one of these projects, lots of pictures and updates. So I think for members of the public that are interested, they can get out there and...
are interested, they can get out there. As Marcy said, you can get a ridge-eye view of the construction project there, the demolition of 820 and the 800 buildings, and what the, just a little bit of background. So it's good information for the general public if they're interested.
And I will tell you, the tenants last Tuesday night let airport staff know that they weren't too happy with the way Boeing had been issuing closures. There was some last-minute closure, they were notified like at 5:00 on a Friday, and one tenant ended up having to pay, one of her customers that was supposed to come into Renton, and she had to pay for him to go to CTAC. So I relayed that information on to Jessie and just said, "We appreciate," the tenants would appreciate a little bit more notice, and last summer, they did such a good job that I think everyone expected it to be at that level, and they're just getting going again, so hopefully they'll work that out. That help, Terry?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll pass on your comments.
Sorry. Any other? Sure.
Just a brief report on my committee in homelessness meeting back in April. We met on the 17th, and we talked about a few things. One of the things was planning our first annual conference that's going to take place on the 27th of this month. But one of the presentations that we had that really moved me was a present, a presentation from homeless youth about homelessness. I've been a part of the governing board now for about five years or so, and this was the first time that I really learned as much as I did about homelessness among youth. And a couple of young people gave us that presentation. One of the individuals, I remember his name was Trey, talked about some of the dynamics and the barriers that impact homeless youth as they become transit. They have to protect themselves from predators, you know, both male and female, and how they dress. They wear a lot of clothing, and they're very mobile. School, going to school is a challenge for a number of reasons, just being able to go to school after having something to eat, something as simple as having a shower and not smelling. One youth mentioned that they sometimes allow themselves to let their hygiene go to repel potential predators, just a number of different things. I ended up, as a result of some of the questions that I had during that presentation, being invited to meet with Jim Theopoulos, the executive director for the Mockingbird Society, which was the organization that prepared these young men for the presentation. And as a result of that, it became apparent to me that it would be beneficial for my colleagues to learn from that also. I think one of the challenges among addressing homeless youth issue appropriate is gaining political will, but the political will doesn't happen if people really don't know what's going on out there. And so I did convene a connection with Jim Theopoulos and Terry Higashiama, and so hopefully something might come from that, but I would love to have you all see that presentation also. We do have a homeless population of youth here in Renton, as we do in South King County, and in many cases, you may not even know they're homeless. They could be individuals that are transit, hanging out at the transit center, they could be hanging out in a number of different places. But these are young people that are being deprived the opportunity to get educated, to become, you know, a part of our communities in a positive way, so I would hope that we could learn a little bit more about that. And that was really one of the main things we talked about at our meeting.
Greg, if I can comment on that, I know that through the Renton School District, there's a lot of emphasis on the homeless youth that we have in, at least in the high school areas, I know. And I know several years ago, one of the groups I belong to purchased washer and dryers for Renton High School primarily for that kind of thing, so that the kids have a place to shower and wash their clothes and, you know, have a home base. And I know that the liaisons and the staff there work really hard with the homeless youth that are there and keeping them in school, so I'm sure there's a lot that fall through the cracks, but I also know that there's a concerted effort already in place that works with them here in our community.
Well, the McKinney-Ventole Act does a pretty good job of providing resources for homeless students in our school district. Aside from that, there are other interesting impacts, the peer pressure that these kids have to endure among their peers, and then even the day-to-day survival part in terms of where their next meals come from and what do they have to do to get those meals and things. So I think that it's an opportunity for us to learn more about it, and I, and that was the reason that I invited Jim to connect with Terry Higashiama to hopefully have a presentation done before you all, so that you can learn some of the things that I did during that presentation. That's about it.
Okay, with that, the committee as a whole is adjourned, and we'll be back as a poll council at 7:00 PM.